September 6th, executive meeting to order. We take roll, please.
Mr. Taylor.
It's the eighth.
Oh, look at me, I wrote it down wrong. Okay, I'll say it again. I'd like to call this September 8th, executive meeting to order. We take a roll, please.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Bedell.
Here.
Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Ms. Hancock. She's here. I don't know.
You didn't.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, we got our meeting minutes of July 7th, our executive meeting, as well as the public hearing, executive meeting, July 14th. So everybody had an opportunity to read those minutes. Now, is there any corrections or objections to the minutes? If not, would we have a count on, I need a, I need a motion to approve the minutes as, as wrote.
Mr. Chair, have a motion to approve the minutes as were written?
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Second.
All those in, in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and the minutes are approved. New business. And we have PC 24-25, Kiana Roberts.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is PC 24-25, Kiana Roberts. This is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 and FPC2 shopping districts for a vehicle detailing and window tinting facility. This is a 0.62 acre tract on the east side of Hall's Ferry Road, approximately 700 feet north of Lucas and Hunt Road, and this is coming to you guys as a letter of decision tonight. The site is in North County and on the aerial is bounded in red. Oh, I did not fix the save to iDrive. My apologies. And this larger aerial, Commissioners can see the extent of the floodplain boundaries on the site. So, PC 24-25, Kiana Roberts is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 shopping district to permit a vehicle detailing and window tinting service. There is an existing two-bay vehicle service center on the site, which has been vacant and in disrepair. The petitioner has also cleaned and removed the junk on the property from previous owners. The preliminary site development plan shows reoccupancy of the existing 1,400 square foot vacant vehicle service center and can, and reusing the canopy and signage. They also indicate that they will repave existing parking lot and restripe the existing parking spaces. And as a reminder, this facility does have two vehicle days. The department is recommending approval of this request. The proposed use meets the four-pronged conditional use permit criteria. And while the existing building can and should be reoccupied as the vehicle detailing and window tinting facility, the department is recommending that any new development adheres to setback restrictions for floodplanes and that any other proposed uses related to aftermarket installations would require a new public hearing. At this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, have a motion for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. Very good. Is there any questions in regards to this PC? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Nays? Ayes have it. This PC is approved. Next, we have PC 25-25.
Mid hat. Yes, good, nope, sorry. Good evening, Commissioners. As Keith mentioned, this is PC 25-25. The petitioner is Mid Hat Zlemovic. The request is for an amended C8 and the proposed use is going to be an indoor recreation complex. It's currently located on a 3.78 acre tract and is located northwest of LeMay Ferry Road, southeast of Interstate 55, and approximately 150 feet north of Longview Drive. Here you can see the location in South County on the side, as well as an aerial outlined in red. And a larger view of that aerial. This is a request to amend an existing C8 planned commercial development to allow an indoor recreation complex, as well as all C2 uses. The previous use was a bowling alley for about 40 years and the subject of the original C8 request. And the applicant does plan on updating the parking and general site, as well as the subject property while utilizing the existing structure on site for the sports complex. From the submitted site plan, they are hoping to reutilize the existing 22,000 square foot vacant bowling alley. They will be planning on updating the roofing, as well as the signage on site. They are planning on repaving the existing parking lot and restriping existing parking spaces, as well as installing some landscaping throughout the site. And then it does have an existing wireless tower that you can see on the square parcel to the left side of the site, as well as a billboard that's pretty much up flush to the right side of the building. At this time, we are, the planning department is recommending approval. We do feel that an indoor recreation complex would be appropriate use for the site. The bowling alley was fairly similar to what they had in the previous past. This wouldn't be going that far out of the way with what they are planning with everything. We do feel that the planned commercial district C8 procedure is the continued appropriate mechanism for all of this. And they are proposing a variety of site improvements that will improve the aesthetics and safety of the site by renovating the parking lot, landscaping, and existing structure. And at this time, I am, I would like to make a motion. Sorry.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'm out.
Okay, and then a second, please. Do we have a second?
Second.
You've got a first and a second. Now, is there any questions, any concerns about this project?
Quick question about the signage. I know that the, the recommendations include that they need to do a monument sign. And it looked like they had a pole sign still existing from the old bowling alley. And looking at the site plan and where the stormwater is, I'm not sure where they're going to be able to put a monument sign without either blocking site distance or being in the stormwater area. Is there an option for them to do something different? Because I don't know if they're going to be able to get a monument sign based on that site plan.
You mean isn't a different sign than a monument sign?
Or a difference, like can they reuse the pole?
The, the reusing, reusing, I'm not quite sure on. I know that typically we do try and have them go through a monument sign with everything. If it's something where when we get to site plan review and it won't work out for that area, that can be a discussion at that point. But I know at this moment, there was nothing that, that would show that they can't be doing that. I'm sorry, that's kind of a rambling answer.
The way we have it written currently does say all freestanding business signs shall be monument in style. If the commission would like, we can revise that to say, we can revise that however the commission finds appropriate.
And to, to build on what Ben and Abby said, if we, we could, what we frequently use is in the conditions of development where we say as approved on the site development plan, that can add in some flexibility. So we could definitely make that change. That way, just like you said, if they try to do the monument sign and they ultimately aren't able to meet those other requirements, that language would allow them, would allow us to use our discretion in, in bringing something different to the planning commission.
I think that'd be great for flexibility, just knowing that when we ask them in the public hearing about some of the area closest to the entrance and with all the stormwater area and what their limitations are and where the building sits, I'm thinking they're going to have a harder time getting a monument sign in that's going to be visible in any way.
Mel, we'll have to have a, a site plan for this, won't we?
So if the commission recommends approval and if the council adopts a new C8 ordinance, you would then be brought a site development plan for your approval, consistent with these conditions of development.
Okay, and at that time, we'll, we'll be able to see if.
We would show the sign as well.
Very good. And I think we can put it off till then. Not, not, not that we're putting it off, but we'll be able to review it at that time.
So when we, if, if the motion is adopted in your letter of recommendation, that we would bring it a subsequent executive meeting, we will have made that change if the, if it is the will of the commission.
So Mel, what was the suggested wording?
So right now, it says, "All freestanding business signs shall be monument in style." If we modify it to say, "All freestanding business signs shall be monument in style as approved on the site development plan," that clause builds in that flexibility for us, for the staff and for the commission in reviewing that site development plan.
And I guess I move to amend the proposal to include that wording as approved on the site development plan.
Second, you've heard the amendment and then that was the motion and a second. Would that satisfy?
Then, Mr. Chair, would you restate the, restate the entire motion? It'd be a motion to add the clause as approved on the site development plan to the sign regulations.
I would understand that that's what we should do. So the motion that Sandy and Hancock had made and seconded by Chris, that we will add that to the recommendation of the planning department to make sure that that is included on the letter of recommendation that will be going out.
So just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So, Mel, just going back to our discussion with the Roberts Rules of Order, so now do we have a quick discussion and a vote on the amendment?
So, right, you would discuss then, so now there's going to be two votes. You need to vote to adopt that amendment, amendment to the motion. And if that passes, then you would vote on the new motion. This is a subsidiary motion. So first, Mr. Taylor, the commission would have to vote up or down whether to adopt this amendment.
You've heard a recommendation and you've heard the motion and the second, all those in favor of approving this amendment signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. And you've heard the recommendation of the department. Once again, we've already had a motion and a second on that for PC 25-25. Do I have a recommendation? We have the recommendation. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have that and it is approved. This recommendation is approved.
So if I may, before we move on, in the past, the department, if we, between info report and letter of rec, if there is a substantial change, we will prepare a cover memo overviewing that. I find this is really minor. But if the planning commission would like a cover memo overviewing this minor update to the, to the report, we can certainly do so. But unless the commission would like that cover memo, I probably wouldn't prepare it.
Okay. Is, is the, the mover of the, the amendment, is that of your approval?
That's fine, Mara. Is that what your intention would be?
Yeah, I think it's minor enough. I just didn't want them to have to come all the way back if they couldn't meet that recommendation. So I think it's minor and doesn't need an additional memo.
Thanks, Keith.
You bet. I've got a question in regards to a sign like this that's still on, on the property. If, so what have they really changed in the PC of what it originally was before?
Since it's been, since it has been Show Me Lanes?
Yes, is it just because it hadn't been sitting idle for so long and sitting vacant?
Um, we would, we would generally, oh, I see. So after Show Me Lanes closed, some of the commission, maybe just you, Mr. Taylor, may recall, U-Haul came forward with a request to do a self-storage facility here. And the commission did recommend, and you might, you probably read this in the report, did recommend approval. But then that petition failed because no legislation was ever brought forward at the council level. So right now, there's just a C8 that permits the bowling alley. So for anything to be permitted here other than the bowling alley, they were always going to have to come back to public hearing. It wasn't necessarily a time limitation. It was just straight up, the use isn't permitted.
So if our bowling alley would have went back in and they would have renovated the place to bowling alley?
Right. They wouldn't have done that.
And at that point?
Exactly.
Would the sign been left like it is? They wouldn't have had to do anything but just fix or sign back up?
I believe so. I, without knowing exactly what the original C8 said, I imagine it probably just permitted, you know, signs per the C2 or the C3, which would permit a freestanding sign on a pole. But given the planning commission's, you know, recent preference for monument signs, we found it was appropriate to recommend here. But to the larger question, anytime an existing sign, if you're doing what we call a cabinet swap, which is really just taking out one message and putting in another message, a property owner can do that without a, a building permit at all.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information.
Of course.
All right. We have old business, none of it's ready for action. Is that correct? Mel, I'm one, two, three items here.
There are three items not ready for action. That's correct.
Okay. I don't think this is the time to ask any questions about that. So let's move into old business letters for approval. PC 18-25, Simoka LLC.
PC 18-25, Simoka LLC was a request for a change of zoning from the R5 and FPR5 residence district to C8 and FPC8 planned commercial district for a proposed office and dental office on a 1.37 acre tract located on the east side of Hall's Ferry Road and approximately 440 feet north of Capital Drive. This is a letter of recommendation of approval that is consistent with the planning commission's action in the, at the August executive meeting. So we are recommending approval of this letter.
Okay, you've heard the department's recommendation for the approval of this letter. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, motion for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any questions or concerns with this letter? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. And next, we have PC 24-25, Kiana Roberts.
And you took action on that letter.
Oh, interesting.
Under new business. So Mel, am I correct that no further action is needed?
Correct, correct.
Even though it was under a letter. Okay. Very good. Correspondence?
Good evening, PC 37-23, Charles Tom Bowman. This is coming before the commission tonight as a request for an extension of time for the approval of the site development plan and substantial construction as required in ordinance 28,982. The proposed use on this site is for an advertising sign. The tract size is 2.85 acres, located on the north side of Manchester Road, approximately 350 feet west of Barrett Station Road. As the commission may recall, this site is located in mid-county and on your right is the site outlined in red. So just to remind everybody, this is, came before this commission as a request for an amendment development in the C8 and FPC8 and a change in zoning from the C8 and FPC8 to the R2 and FPR2 for an advertising sign. This petition came before this commission on December 11th, 2023, for their public hearing. And the planning commission approved their letter of recommendation in favor of the petition on January 25th of 2024. The ordinance 28,982 permitting one advertising sign became effective on February 21st, 2024. And then in the ordinance 28,982, section two, subsection three of the ordinance states that within 18 months of the approval of the preliminary site development plan by the county council and prior to any site disturbance, the developer shall submit to the planning commission for its review of site development plan and receive approval. The preliminary development plan was approved on February 21st, 2024 by county council. And the deadline for site development plan review and approval was August 21st of 2025. So staff is recommending approval for both the extension of time to obtain the site development plan, moving that approval out six months to March 8th, 2026, and as well as approving the extension of the date to complete substantial construction to a year of March 8th, 2027, based off of that, obtaining of that site development approval. This is due to the fact that the developer has been actively working with St. Louis County departments, as well as MoDOT, to ensure that their site development plan is meeting the requirements outlined in their site-specific ordinance. And at this time, I ask for a motion.
You've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, motion for approval?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, we have two seconds. Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Next, we have our next communication here. PC 03-24, Black Tree Association LLC.
Yes, hello again, everybody. As Keith stated, this is PC 03-24. The petitioner is Black Tree Association LLC. They're requesting an extension of time for approval of the site development plan as required in conditional use permit 1,000. The proposed use is going to be for an outdoor recreation field and the tract size is 14.12 acres, located northeast and southwest, on the northeast and southwest side of Mount Olive Road, approximately 260 feet west of Marchy Drive. If you'll see here, you can see that the property is located in South County and then outlined in red is the actual property. I do want to note that it's two separate parcels. The larger of the two is going to be the actual recreational fields. The smaller one is currently being used as a parking lot and they plan on continuing to use it as such. For a little bit of a timeline with everything, the request for a conditional use permit in an R5 and FPR5 for outdoor recreational fields with accessory, sorry, with accessory parking is the original request. Petition went to public hearing on February 12th, 2024. The planning commission approved their letter of recommendation in favor of the petition on March 4th, 2024. A conditional use permit 1,000 then became effective on April 24th, 2024. Per that conditional use permit, a site development plan must be submitted within 18 months prior to any site disturbance, with construction beginning within two years of the effective date of that permit. The current deadline for the site development plan review and approval is October 24th, 2025. Currently, the planning department is recommending approval for this request. The developer's been actively working with all departments to ensure that their site development plan is meeting the requirements outlined in their site-specific ordinance. Likewise, the developer has noted financial hardships related to obtaining their approved site development plan, planning on, they're currently placing a hold on the project while they're awaiting to hear back on grant funding approval to continue their work. And at this time, I would like to make a recommendation.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make the motion.
Thanks, Sandy. Now, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We had a, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have a question, Keith.
Yes, Paula. I'm sorry, I should have asked that before.
That's okay. They mentioned there was a deadline of October 24th, I believe, for a site plan approval. Is there a time to get that? Is that something they still have to get approved for, October 24th?
Yes, so the, the, the extension is allowing them to, to have additional time to be able to get their site plan approved. So this would be extending it past that October deadline.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, what happens if they don't have any conclusion to their search for financial funding in the next year? How long are we approving or extending?
Sure, so the, the current request and their, their specific request and what we're hoping to grant them is going to be for an additional year with everything. I can't really speculate what their plans are if they do not get the grant funding. I just know that they're hoping to kind of ease some of the financial costs with everything by getting that, that funding and the additional time would let, let them have the ability to hear back through this grant cycle.
To build on that just a little bit, depending on how they progress, the petitioner could come to the planning commission again and request an additional extension of time. That, that option will always exist in their CUP.
I just got a question. You know what the hardships might be?
You mean why they're asking for the extension request?
Yes.
I believe that as the, the project has continued, it's gotten fairly cost prohibitive and they're hoping that with the grant funding being granted, that it'll basically be allowing them to finish the project.
Yeah, were we talking about soccer fields?
Yeah, it's that, it's the Ajax soccer field down Mount Olive Road. And I think the, I don't think they budget for things like this as an organization. So I think that's why they're having trouble with the funding.
Thanks, Mel.
Oh, I got a question. This is our Vettah. So we, the proposal is for a one-year time extension. Okay, didn't we just approve on the previous six month? So how's this work?
It's to the commission's discretion how long you want to grant the extension. For the previous one, they have a lot fewer hurdles in front of them. They are much closer to having an approvable plan. So in our discussion, that's why we recommended only a six-month extension for the Charles Tom Bowman site, whereas we've recommended a year for this. But it is in the commission's discretion how long you want to grant an extension. So if you did want to grant a shorter time period, that way they do need to come back and give an update in the rationale sooner. That is within the commission's purview.
I thought I also heard you say, okay, understood, understood. But I, I also thought I heard you say, if, if the time goes by of the extension and they come back again, we could potentially, or add another year?
You could. That's what the CUP section allows a petitioner to come to the, to the commission to request extensions based on whatever rationale. Truly, it's pretty broad. But if they, like, because basically what the consequence is, if a petitioner doesn't get an approved site development plan by said deadline, it's then, the commission could consider repeal of the conditional use permit. So that's part of why they have to come and request these extensions, because otherwise they risk the revocation of the CUP itself.
Okay, understood.
Okay. That answer your question, Irvin?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Nays? Ayes have it. And the correspondence is approved. And for the good of the order, we have a work session here.
Okay.
Everybody's ready. Here we go.
So I can touch on this first one. Just a reminder, I sent an email out about a week ago letting you all know that on Monday, September 22nd, night of the public hearing, meeting of the planning commission, we are going to have a work session about our staff information reports. So we're, now that we're, we have a newly adopted comprehensive plan, we're kind of reevaluating the information report, how to make it more concise, accurate, clear, legible, so that it's the most useful tool it can be for all of you as you consider these land use petitions. So we're gonna, we're, we're seeking feedback right now. So if you have a chance to email feedback on the information. So we're gonna, we're, we're seeking feedback right now. So if you have a chance to email, um, feedback on the information report to me directly, that would be great. We're just looking for really open-ended feedback. Are there sections of the report that you find confusing? Maybe sections that need more information or less information. Kind of whatever reactions you have, we are happy to hear them. That will help us inform the project that we're working on and tailor that work session based on the feedback and questions that you send us. So, uh, you, you saw the email. You also saw that I incorrectly copied all of the planning commissioners. So, um, please do not respond to the full group, just me directly to avoid any kind of issues with sunshine law. I think that is all I had. But yeah, just wanted to put a plug in for that coming soon.
All right. Thanks, Mary. Um, and then what do we have here? Was the, uh, twenty fifty plan adopted?
It's the biggest STL Co. twenty fifty update of all time. The plan was adopted on Tuesday, September second, the year of our Lord, twenty twenty-five. If you can believe it. And then the next day, Dr. Page came down and he signed the ordinance in front of all of us. So that's him in the workroom, uh, doing it live. Can you believe after all this time it is adopted? So it really, if you know, if Jacob was here, which he's on his happy trail in, in Scotland right now, but, um, he would say that this just gets us to the starting line, really. So this got us all laced up. We've got our, our, you know, our marathon shoes on, but the race really, really begins, um, in implementation. We're really excited. We're really, um, really grateful for the collaboration and the efforts from this planning commission from the Conference of Planning Committee. Um, it definitely wouldn't be what it is without the input in the collaboration with this group. So I really appreciate that. Um, and you know, I'll give, I'll give some more kind of update and next steps at the Comp Planning Committee meeting next week. We wanted to make sure that the whole body knew, um, that the plan is adopted. So now we'll move into implementation. You'll be hearing a lot more about that from Joel instead of myself. And we've got, we got a lot of work on our plate.
Well, congratulations, Mel, and then pass that on to Jacob and the whole staff there. A lot of hard work put into that and hats off to everybody there.
Thank you. Yeah, we're really, we're really proud.
Yeah, as well as all the commission that has been to the meetings and throughout the last two years or better. Very, very good work. So very good. Anybody else have anything to say?
Just great job and let the fun begin, right? Now roll up the sleeves and make it happen.
They stay rolled up, you know.
Very exciting, Mel. Very exciting. We're all behind you.
Yes, we are. All right. Well, now you said next, next week, you're saying on the fifteenth, we're having our.
So no meeting next week. I think there are three or four of the commissioners are going to the, um, the by-state planning conference, which is very exciting. Um, I wish I could add you all to the team's group chat about what sessions we're going to go to, but I'm sure we'll all run into each other, sit together, et cetera. Um, I am doing two.
I'm sorry, what's the name of the conference?
It's the, it's called Planning in Motion is its name. It's the Missouri and Arkansas By-State Conference of the APA, American Planning Association. I'm presenting two sessions on Tuesday morning about STL Co. twenty fifty. Mary is presenting a session about the University City Comprehensive Plan that she worked on before she joined us. Um, and then she and Gretchen are on the, I don't know what the name of the committee is, but they're like bringing the conference to us to double-handedly, it seems like to me. So.
Also, don't forget, we got two awards now.
And we got two. Thank you so much, Gretchen. I don't, I, because I don't think anyone in this group had heard, but we got a, an award from the state APA chapter for outstanding plan for STL Co. twenty fifty. So at the conference, we'll be receiving an award for outstanding plan. And then the commission, I think you met at least our intern, Michael, came to a meeting or two, but over the summer, our two interns, Michael and Josh, were working, Summer was directing them to develop a strategy for our new land bank for the way that they select parcels to market and get back onto, um, you know, into productive use. And we submitted that as an outstanding student project and they won outstanding student project. So this one's for Summer and the interns. Woo! So we'll be getting that award at the luncheon as well. So it's a great, it's a great time for planning.
Mel, I would love to see that plan about the land bank properties.
Yeah, definitely. Um, we can, we can definitely, um, share the report that the interns wrote up on it as well.
Very good.
Thanks for the reminder, Gretchen.
Any, anybody else have anything to add? No, okay. Well, then I'd like to move for adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Todd. A second. We have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Andy. A second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. And this meeting is adjourned. And we will see everybody back at six o'clock on September twenty-second, I believe. Is that right?
Correct. Yes. Thank you all.
All right. And when is that? What is the next comprehensive meeting?
That's the same night. It's a full, a full September twenty-second.
The whole thing, okay.
Yep, we're doing the whole thing. Yeah.
All right. Have a good evening and we'll see, I'll see some of you Monday morning.
Sounds good.
Okay, take care.
See you.
Bye.